Let's call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Geisler?
Here.
Counselor Jelly?
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Here.
Mayor Boucher?
Here. Announcements? Do any counselors have announcements this evening? Nothing? We have no public hearings? We have a communication from someone on the Hermantown Road? Could you outline that?
Well, just a question about, to the council about an availability charge for water and sewer. Those are, have been in place on that property and other properties for years and years in advance. There's some questions about some changes that have happened in terms of how we do availability over the years. We've recently changed that amount from two thousand five hundred to five thousand. Aligns Hermantown a little bit better with other cities along with the past assessment we've done, but but we'll continue discussing that particular communication.
But staff will communicate and work towards a response to that. And they'll keep counsel advised.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do we have kind of a short summation of the budget presentation and the schematic design cost estimate?
Two significant presentations in pre-agenda. Kevin Arm covered our 2024 budget booklet presentation. Most importantly, that's going to be in front of the council on December 4th. So folks who are following along with that can see that kind of come to completion, at least at that point. And then the second presentation was a schematic design estimate, taking a look at what the work that K and GSGW have done in terms of meeting the needs of the design group and the arena of their dreams, along with lining up with available funds. There's still a little bit of a gap there, and there's discussions over the next two weeks about how we close that gap and align with what we're hoping to build as soon as possible.
Thank you. Next is public discussion. This is general public discussion about items not on the agenda. Every item that's voted on later on, we'll have a separate time for public discussion. So if anyone is here for any of the resolutions that we might pass tonight, there will be public discussion under those resolutions. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council about any item not on the agenda? If so, if you're in chambers, please approach the podium and state your name and address. If you're online, please raise your hand or announce your name and address. We have a microphone right up here, sir.
My name's Robert. I just wanted to clarify, I was under that communication piece of the agenda. I know this is kind of out of order, probably.
Oh, no, that's not a problem.
Oh. I missed what was said.
We received your communication.
Okay.
Staff is working on the issue, and they will be communicating with you and getting back to you on this. There won't, there is no action that's going to be taken tonight about your request. We will, staff will be getting back to you and they'll be involving council in whatever they do.
Okay, okay.
So it's not done, but there's no action this evening.
And nothing to see. Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around for the exciting meeting if you'd like. Thank you. Is there any other public discussion? This is the last opportunity for general public discussion on tonight's agenda? With no more public discussion, we will close that section. There are no motions. We'll move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes the minutes for the November 6, 2023 council continuation meeting and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from November 1st, 2023 through November 15th, 2023 in the amount of six hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, we have a whole bunch of resolutions relating to Project 534. First is Resolution 2023-157, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Mercer Parcel 395-0010 -02821 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. This is the 9750 adjustment or assessment for the road improvement project. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? This is just one of the resolutions are, what was your last name, sir?
One sixty-four.
So one sixty-four. We'll be a little while for that one. This is just for Resolution 157, the Mercer Parcel. Is there any public input on this resolution? Last opportunity for public input on Resolution 2023-157. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, Resolution 2023-158, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Jobin Parcel 395-0010-02822 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. This is a 9750 assessment. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-158? The Jobin Property Assessment. Any public input on this resolution? If so, state your name and address for the record. Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-158? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-159, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Volk Parcel 395-0070-00102 For Road Improvement District Number 534. This is another 9750 assessment. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Any questions or comments from council?
I just wanted to, there's two parcels, and I know this was one of them, but there was, this is right across from the school drive, and there were some issues with approach of the driveway and some trees and things like that. Do we know if anything was?
I know that there was a culvert issue.
Yeah.
And that the culvert issue was going to be handled by the city engineer and Public Works at a later time due to the fact that the culvert is over a trout stream or a designated trout stream. They didn't want all of the federal problems that would go with fixing that during this project to delay the project. And they also are looking at the approach and any visibility issues, and we'll take corrective action.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Any public comment on Resolution 2023-159? Any public comment on a resolution adopting the assessment against the Volk Parcel? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. 2023-160, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Olson Parcel 395-0070-00106 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. This is a 9750 adjustment for the recent road improvement project on the Uggstead Road. Is there any comments from council or questions? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-160? Do we have any public input on the Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Olson Parcel? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-161, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Gilbert Parcel 395-0070 -00108 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second. Judge can have it.
We have a second by Counselor LeBlanc. He got it just by a hair. This is another 9750 assessment associated with the Uggstead Road project. Is there any questions or comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Gilbert Parcel? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-161? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. 2023-162, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Postal Parcel 395-0070 -00437 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Another 9750 assessment for the Uggstead Road Improvement Project. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2023-162? Is there any public input on the Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Postal Parcel? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-163, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Frick Parcel 395-0070 -00890 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Get in on that one.
Give him one off.
This is another 9750 assessment for the Uggstead Road project. Is there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? There's any public input, please start with your name and address. Any public input on Resolution 2023-163? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-164, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Schultz Parcel 395-0070 -00980 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Is there a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. This is another 9750 assessment for the Uggstead Road project. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please state your name and address.
Resolution 4161, Uggstead Road. And I guess since we've talked last time, I have done more reading on the laws and of the state for, or they said, and I kind of, reading through it, I can't, came to my attention, there's a couple of things. The first was, it seemed like there's supposed to be a thirty-five percent majority petition signed off by the residents on the road to give kind of the authority to move forward. Perhaps it was voted on across the board in the for, but the other part, point was, I think this maybe has come up before, these assessments just in general, they are supposed to be tied to the value of the improvement that's on the property, and there's, there's really been no, what I would say, indication that there's an improvement to the value of my property or anybody on Uggstead, really. The benefit has been more for the greater community. So it's not like the value of our homes have gone up. We basically, we had a paved road that was decent degrading, and it's been repaved, and it'll it'll need repaven again in the future when it, when maintenance is needed. So me, the value doesn't doesn't seem like it's there. I mean, I will leave it to the state to decide, or the county, I guess, is the next step, to decide on the legality of that. But just wanted to voice my thoughts too, that it kind of feels, everybody I tell of these assessments to, they say, the city can really do that? And that, to me, feels like a dictatorship almost of, the city's telling you, we're going to do this, we're going to charge you this. They do it, and they charge you. And unfortunately, we probably should have said, put our opinion in maybe two years ago. I actually thought the the project had kind of canceled, actually. I didn't even know it was going forward after like maybe it fell apart in 2021 or 2020, but that's, I guess, my two cents on it, but it just, it doesn't sit right with me more than anything, just the way it's handled and kind of pushed, pushed on the residents. It's kind of, in the name of progress, you're kind of pricing people out of their homes, in my opinion, and that's really not progress, in my opinion. It's, I mean, you just it's getting very, very expensive to live in Hermantown, and I'm thankful I have a good job, but not everybody necessarily does, so it's, you know, nine thousand, ten grand, even if you, one thousand eight hundred dollars or a thousand or eight hundred dollars a year is still a lot of a lot of money, so for everybody.
Okay. If you're around at the end of the meeting, we may have some other information on the things you brought up. I'll ask our attorney, are you aware of any thirty-five percent signature laws that would cover this?
I am, but that's for a different process.
Is that for utilities? Thank you. Any other public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-164? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-165, Resolution Not Adopting An Assessment Against The Hokinson Parcel 395-0115-00010 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. And this is a motion to not approve the assessment because he has elected to choose to be part of the Twin Pines Road when and if that road is ever rebuilt, and he would be assessed with that. On a corner lot, we're only allowed to assess one road. So we gave him the option of choosing either Uggstead or Twin Pines, and he's aware of the possibility that when Twin Pines is done sometime in the future, that the assessment may be more, and then if he would have agreed to this, he would not have to pay in the future. And he chose as he did. Are there any questions or comments from council?
His driveway is on Twin Pines, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And quite a, quite a distance down Twin Pines. In fact, most of the corner portion of the property is on a hill and not usable. Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-165? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on a resolution not adopting an assessment against the Hokinson Parcel? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2023-166, Resolution Adopting An Assessment Against The Hanson Parcel 395-0070-00962 For Road Improvement District Number 534. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. It's another ninety-seven fifty assessment for the Uggstead Road project. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on a resolution for the assessment against the Hanson Parcel? Any public input on Resolution 2023-166? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2023-167, Resolution Adopting Assessment Role For Road Improvement District Number 534, the Uggstead Road. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. This is the total project assessment list?
No, this is the full list.
Including what we've just approved.
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2023-167? Is there any public input on the Resolution Adopting The Assessment Role For Road Improvement District Number 534? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-168, Resolution Approving Application Of Assessment Role Number 537A-44 For Differral Of Assessment Against The Property For The Construction Of Road Improvement District Number 534, Hardship Differral. Do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor Jones. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. This is a deferral of the assessment based on a hardship. Do you have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, or is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2023-168? Any public input on a resolution approving an application for a hardship deferral? Number 534A-27. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2023-169, Resolution Approving Application Of Assessment Role Number 537A-44 For Differral Of Assessment Against The Property For The Construction Of Road Improvement District Number 534, Hardship Differral. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Are there any questions or comments from council? Do we have any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2023-169? Any public input on a resolution approving the application, approval of application of assessment role number 537A-44 For Differral Of Assessment? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution 2023-170, Resolution Approving Change Order Number 17 For Road Improvement District Number 534, Uggstead Road And Arrowhead Roads. Is there a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Should we move this to our city engineer?
Let's ask Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Wolf, can you explain this?
Yeah. Mayor and council, this is change order number seventeen for the Uggstead Road Reconstruction Project, and it's in regards to a Batuminous Incentive Pay. Our construction documents allow for an incentive when the density exceeds the requirement. So there's, there's two pieces of this. One is the incentive for the pavement on Uggstead Road, and the second piece is the incentive for the Uggstead or on the Arrowhead Road for a total of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars.
So this is an incentive pay for increased density in the Batuminus?
Correct.
But this was increased density that was made necessary by the late date of application? You've said in previous meetings that when Batuminus is put down past a certain date, that the increase, the density needs to be increased because of the temperature.
So that comment was made, when the temperatures are low, the hot mix asphalt cools off quicker, and you need to compact it and roll it on a quicker, so it doesn't cool off. Because it cools off, and you don't get the density.
Okay. So this wasn't related to temperature, then?
No, it was not.
Okay.
Yeah. Increased density increases delay for the road, I'm assuming?
So the MINDOT specifications say that the target is a hundred percent of the maximum density, and then there's incentives if you go above that. So they were hitting one oh one, one oh two. So there's incentives for that. And then there's, equally, there's disincentives if the density of the blacktop is below the target. And the MINDOT has tables for each, the road is classified into different lots, and then you apply the incentive or disincentive to each lot, and a lot is represented by the test, the density test. So, for example, a lot might relate to five hundred tons of blacktop or, you know, eight hundred feet of road, for example. So that's, that's clearly defined in the MINDOT standard specifications, and our state and federal aid dollars require us to specify the, the Batuminus specification within the MINDOT spec book. So on our local projects, we can take that element out.
Yeah. Does, does the higher density material benefit the city?
What's the reason for the incentive?
What's the reason for the higher density?
Yes. The short answer is yes. It's, it's been proven by MINDOT Materials Labs that a higher density gives you both better ride quality and better handles the traffic flowing better because of the density. That's why there's an incentive program.
Is there a reason it's called a change order, not an incentive pay?
Well, the, the change order modifies the contract documents, you know, up or down, and then the description of the change order is incentive. Pay.
Okay. I guess I just think the language is a little misleading, but okay.
I think anytime that we change- I think anytime that we change the amount of money that we're paying, we have to have a change order.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, just to clarify, I don't recall, we've done this on other projects, um, is this?
Um, in two thousand sixteen, when we did Steppner Road, we had a similar incentive disincentive program, and that was the last time we did a federal aid project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can't blame you for seven years down the road, right?
You're expected to have a personal memory, John.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seventy? Do we have any public input on the resolution approving change order number seventeen for road improvement district number five thirty-four? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geiser.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seventy-one. Resolution approving pay request number six for road improvement district number five thirty-four to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of ninety-eight thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and forty-three cents, do we have a motion?
Will be approved.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Uh, Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, thank you, mayor and council, so this is pay application number six for the work associated with the Uggstead and Arrowhead Road project. Um, this ninety-eight thousand odd dollars represents some of the final cleanup, some sidewalk curb gutter and some miscellaneous uh turf establishment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-one? Any public input on the resolution approving pay request number six for road improvement district number five thirty-four? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Geiser.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-two. Resolution adopting assessment role for road improvement district number five thirty-eight. Richard Avenue and Lindgren Road, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Wicklund.
Uh, this covers all of the property owners that have previously been informed about this uh through Richard Avenue, Lindgren Road and through uh, the Herman Town Marketplace where some significant upgrades have been done for the roads, including a new road and new intersection. Um, we don't have any objections at this point for any of these assessments.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-two? Any public input on resolution ad- adopting the assessment role for road improvement district number five thirty-eight? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geiser.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-three. Resolution repealing forty-eight thousand dollar assessment from the resolution number two thousand twenty dash sixty-eight, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, second by Counselor Geisler, we didn't cover this one in pre-agenda.
Uh, just in passing, uh, but mayor council, this, even the resolution number will hint at it, in two thousand twenty, uh, one of the home, one of the property owners within the marketplace uh agreed to an assessment that was preliminary based on the work that we thought we would perform and is now on the verge of being completed. This uh piece of action then uh aligns the uh uh assessment for this particular property owner with the group that you just passed and makes everything equal for all the property owners in there.
So that owner gets a lower assessment than what they had originally agreed?
They had started paying on an assessment because they were in support of the project. Um, unable to get in front of it, but now this, again, creates alignments for all the property owners.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Prepayment is nice.
Well, it shows the person's support of the project. Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-three? Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Geiser.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-four. Resolution approving pay request number five for road improve- improvement district number five thirty-eight to Yuland Brothers Incorporated in the amount of four hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred four dollars and fifty-seven cents, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, second by Counselor Geisler. Uh, this is a pay as you go on the marketplace road reconstruction.
Mr. Wolf, you can walk us through a little bit of the work.
Yeah, so the, mayor and council, this is uh passment number five for the work associated with the, the improvements we're making in the marketplace. And the, the bulk of the, the payment is from bituminous paving, the concrete curb gutter and sidewalk. This project, just as a little FYI, um, there's some concrete sidewalk that we decided will be, best be improved um next year. So we're gonna put this project to bed for the winter and then we'll, we'll finish it first thing in the, in the spring.
Thank you, is the pavement in?
The, the blacktop is down, yes.
The businesses in that area will be happy with that.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from council?
Just question following up, did this have an incentive for bituminous uh compaction?
Not a state aid project.
No.
Okay, no.
Any other questions from council?
One more, I guess, even though we don't have the um incentive, do we still test it though, correct?
Yes, we, yes, we have a, a EPC who is our um material testing consultant on this one.
Thank you.
Anything else? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-four? Any public input on approving the pay request number five for road improvements, improvement district number five thirty-eight? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geiser.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-five. Resolution approving the change order for the capacity increase to the Herman Town Arena Chiller, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jones. Mr. Wicklund.
So this is an opportunity for the city to enhance the abilities uh, of the chiller purchased by the school to potentially service uh two arenas. The subcontractor for the city's architect reviewed uh, the purchase of uh the chiller that the school did and believes that this upgrade before today is necessary uh, to adequately operate an arena that will have two uh sheets of ice. Uh, as it's already been purchased, the chiller I'm talking about has already been purchased, that's why uh, we're kind of approaching this similar to a change order.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Are we returning that chiller and purchasing a different one, or what's the story of that?
No, this will just be in addition to the chiller that's purchased and ready.
So you can, okay.
Change the plugs in the points.
Yep.
Gotcha.
If you actually add another compressor.
I did, yeah, I just didn't know you was, okay.
And it, it's a good deal for the city, I mean, understanding that the original purchase was around eight hundred, this adds seventy thousand, it's, it's a good deal.
Any other questions? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-five? Any public input on the resolution approving the change order for the capacity increase to the Herman Town Arena Chiller? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one seven-six. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a CMAR contract between the city of Herman Town and Kraus Anderson Construction Company, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Jelly will second that. Mr. Wicklund.
So this is the contract to make a, the construction manager at risk for the arena project, uh, they have performed and continue to perform all of the pre-construction effort, uh, this solidifies them as the C A uh, M A R, uh, which was recommended long ago through a process and a group that included uh members of this group. Uh, the community, the school, uh, and the hockey community as well.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I'll just add that the CMAR process was the same process that was used on the Wellness Center, a different construction manager, but the reason we do that is for uh a lot, but uh, so that the city's not managing the project and that the city can take advantage of the tax uh savings of not paying sales tax as the C M acts as our agent in purchasing materials.
Thank you. Anything else from council?
I think we're gonna hear from the public, so I'll just let them talk.
Okay. Um, I'd like to comment that is so far uh in this process, it has worked better from my experience than the last one on the Wellness Center. Uh, where we were surprised with uh costs a lot more than we're, are on this one, and I appreciate that. Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Count to check, uh, forty-eight sixty-six Herman Town Road, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, um, I want to ask you to maybe not vote on this yet, uh, I read the contract, the guaranteed price amount in the contracts is eighteen million. Uh, prior to this meeting, there was a pre-agenda meeting, we clearly saw in that meeting that uh eighteen million is not gonna be enough. Uh, so I would urge you not uh to vote on this yet. Uh, secondly, um, I work with a lot of clients that work in the commercial construction space. Um, it's becoming a little more competitive, um, I understand that we went into a contract back in March or uh May of twenty twenty-two. And a lot has changed since then, um, it might be uh wise for the council to consider opening it back up for a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public input? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Cedar Ridge Drive. Um, I would like to second that postponing the vote, um, from the fundraising portion of the partnership, uh, we appreciate more time, um, just to consider options. Um, fundraising has been going relatively well, um, but it, as we expressed during the design meetings, that everything just felt really rushed. We saw the design plan last Monday, one week ago. And that's not a lot of time to show potential sponsors, um, and just make sure that everything goes smoothly and this project is done well. Um, so any additional time um would be appreciated and postponing this vote um, until another meeting would be ideal for our group. Thank you.
Thank you, any other public input? Either in chambers or online?
Yes, forty-nine fourteen Trails and Drive. Um, I'm here to address you guys, council, as a concerned member of this community. And as a member of the, that was kind of a lead guy for this vote yes committee. I stood here probably about two years ago on the interview process that helped interview ICS, Johnson, Wilson and Kraus Anderson. The reason I selected Kraus Anderson was because of their marketing agent and their individual that could help pass the referendum, because without a referendum passed, we would not be standing here today talking about that. It was probably about within two months after we hired them, the individual that had pretty much promised us a greater than ninety percent pass rating on the referendum retired and walked away. We personally called him and asked him if he would stay on to help us, because that's what they kind of sold us on. Uh, we were told no. So our vote yes committee pretty much passed this referendum up a handbook from Kraus Anderson with us doing all the work. Uh, knowing that uh, that I look back today, I can't guarantee you I would have selected Kraus Anderson to go ahead with this process. And I kind of want to reiterate the question, uh, Mr. uh, Counselor LeBlanc asked. When he asked, why can't we open this up to somebody else? And you say, because they're the general. What about an ICS Johnson Wilson now? You know, they all go out and get bids, I understand that. But maybe Kraus Anderson's contractor is more expensive than a Johnson Wilson or an ICS contractor. So my question is just like everybody, just like Counselor LeBlanc. Why don't we open it up to other people? Because it's strike two to me is when I sat up here and said, this is kind of the budget we're looking at. Kraus Anderson said, I, I think we could work with that. And as a concerned member of this community, we're cutting everything out of this that has a community aspect. We wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the community voting yes. So I want you guys as individuals that represent this community to look at the big picture, I am yet to see a thirty-two million dollar ring. I see what they proposed and gave us five million dollar, or five million dollars more than that, what they need. If I don't see the big picture, I don't know what we need to be doing. But I'm standing here as somebody that was out on the street corner fighting to get this vote yes and selling a project that I hope we can make this community proud of. I don't see that on what they're presenting now. So I hope you guys reconsider that vote. Uh, and we step back and take our time and get this right, we have one kick at the can. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Can I ask a question?
When, when we're done with public comment, we'll have another chance for council to comment on this. Any other public comment? Before we go back to council with questions and comments, I'd like to ask our city attorney his thoughts on eighteen million in one number versus uh what we're told a guaranteed maximum price would be that they can't commit to right now and the nature of the contract.
Mayor, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Overm, he, sometimes we divide and conquer on some of these projects and this is one, been one that he has taken the lead on this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Overm?
And I need to be, there's a clarification on the eighteen twenty-one. Where is that from?
Well, it evidently, it was told to us just now that it's in the contract we're looking at approving. Thank you. And we were told earlier this evening that it wouldn't be prepared until later in the process. And uh council, we, we have I'm guessing some more questions from counselors, uh, Counselor Jones?
Yeah, just logistically in a world, say we
in a world, say we did try and put this up for bid or whatever the process would be, one, what is the timeline? And two, what does that do to say we do end up sticking with Kraus Anderson at the end of it? Is that still a one point nine five percent, or has that become a different number then? And then we're set back even further? Like, logistically, what does this process look like? Who has that answer?
Well, I think just the basic piece of it, you know, one, part of what we learned in pre-agenda and we've learned in multiple meetings today is that time is money. And there's a desire for this project to happen and be a reality in September of twenty twenty-five. So any passing time doesn't tend to lower the cost of something. So if we're in a position where we were to open that up for bid, that is time. So there's, there's no way around that. Yes, similar to any negotiation or anything. Right now, we're starting at a contract with a one point nine five percent piece to K. As has been mentioned time and time again, we could definitely potentially improve that, and we could definitely potentially not improve that. Those are both risks of any contract negotiation.
Well.
So, two things. The contract does have eighteen million dollars in it. There is eighteen million dollars listed in the contract. Yes, eighteen million dollars and zero cents, which also isn't accurate. So that's like, the logistical doesn't really matter?
So I guess the way I look at it is you can't control the final cost, because it's all going to come down to what the bids are. Right? And to a certain extent, we cannot control what the cost of the building is going to be, because we don't know what the bids are to build it yet.
They are going to have a guaranteed maximum price.
But they're going to put it out for bids first.
I don't know the timing of that process.
I don't think they would put it out for, they would give us a maximum price without first doing some due diligence on what the bids are going to cost.
I asked that question tonight, and right, yeah, the guaranteed maximum price comes in after the bids are obtained.
Yes.
Again, remember the bidding process is open and transparent.
My point is, the only number that we can control is the markup that the general contractor or whatever you want to call them,
Construction.
Construction manager gives us. That's the only number.
Well, I would argue that you don't control it, you just have an opportunity to influence it.
Yes.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, that's the only thing that we can influence. Now, we can ask for estimates and bids all we want, but I mean, we already have a design, right? So the only thing that we can really change right now is the markup that K gives us on the bids.
Yeah, well, I, I think we're looking at a motion on the table, and the motion is to approve. If the motion passes and approves, we can go forward with that. If it does not pass, I think we're done for a while. We have to start over again.
Do we though? Because we have paid K for the initial design work, right? So we could take that design and bring it to different builders, different managers. So I don't, I don't know. It's just, I'm asking.
What if, if we tabled this and we're able to get concrete answers on that timeline and logistics and have that by twelve-four when K can present us a more detailed?
First of all, I think the, the thought of rebidding something that we've already bid and approved and committed to in this type of large process, I don't think is going to work. I think we, by, if we turn this down, if we vote against it, I think we effectively fire K.
But turning it down or voting no, tabling was different.
Let me finish. We can change the motion if the people that made the motion on the second wish to alter their motion to table it. We can do that, and we can have some time to find some more answers.
But tabling it wouldn't allow another contractor to come in and say, hey, we'd give you a one point five percent markup on our bids.
Not the timeline we want, probably.
Maybe. We don't know that.
We're also tied to like a very bureaucratic process. It's not just like a contractor can walk in and say that they will do something. Like, there's procedures in place.
The other thing, Brian, those plans that we saw tonight are very, very preliminary and schematic. Before the project can be bid out by K or anybody, there are months of of building that plan. You heard them talk about the need for mechanical, other electrical design. Nobody even knows how big the HVAC units need to be, or the electrical panels, or that type of thing.
That was kind of baked into my question was, what, because what do we pay K sixty grand for pre-design work? What does that bring you? What, what point does that bring you to in the project? Do you buy schematics for sixty grand, or do you just?
Separate contracts. K is only the construction manager. DSGW's scope of work is separate and.
So that money pretty much went to DSGW?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, and it's, it's, again, it's just a portion of the big picture of the project.
I get that, but we should be able to know what we're paying for. What are we buying for sixty grand from K? Because that's what the pre-design work was, right? Am I remembering that number correctly?
Yes, there's, there's an additional time-based reality in what you're considering, though. Is that there's likely work that has been performed already
Yep.
that is in a contract that's not yet signed because of the length of time it takes a project of this nature to be negotiated through the legal teams on both.
So it sounds, sounds like we have to start by twenty twenty-five for all of our money to still be good.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying in this particular example is any, anything short of, if, if you table it for two weeks because you want more information, and then you make a change, it isn't going to be a quick change. It'll be a many, many month change because of work that's already been performed, that's likely already baked into this contract, and it's likely been performed to the degree of good faith because of the entire process they went through earlier. Again, certainly the council's choice to table and or walk away, but I don't think it, I think it extends some timeframes pretty considerably, no matter who we're dealing with next. Because of all the work that's gone into this time thus far. I would.
I just, can I just say one thing? I just don't like being told what the markup is going to be without the chance of other people bidding on that.
We just weren't in front of that process.
And they've already bid on that.
Was that number ever discussed in your meeting?
What number?
The one, the markup?
I think we went through that process.
Point of order.
Well, we're asking the people that have the information.
And again, Ellie's point of she wants to tape and and I agree with Mister Stofy that disappointing that the person who was going to help with the referendum retired, very disappointing, but the fact that Kraus Anderson has built most of the recent arenas in the vicinity here in the Heritage Center and the project in Virginia. So I think that too. And again, I wasn't part of that, but I think that too weighed into it. And again, I don't think going to get somebody who's never built an arena would be a, a, a good benefit for the city.
There is a contractor in the loop that's built two other rings.
Yep.
But they were probably also part of that RFP process.
They were asked for to submit a proposal, and they did not.
Did not.
So we can get hung up on this, but also realizing like this could also turn out poorly, right? Like, we could take this route and we could tarnish this relationship with K A and not save any money and maybe miss out on some expertise. So I would be comfortable with like tabling this and getting a few more answers. But I don't think that we should come at it with the direction of quote unquote, voting no or firing K A, because also Joe said, like, a lot of this work has been done in a good faith effort with the assumption that they are already in a contract with us to perform this work. So there could be work already completed that is not in contract bounds. So I'd be comfortable with tabling it till December four, when they come to us with more of those skimmed down numbers. But I, I don't support kind of just a full stop and start over, because I think that that would cause more headache and more cost and more money in a very much longer timeline than we're facing right now.
Just from the limited experience I've had doing this, I don't think it's wise to change the construction manager at risk at this point. I understand the disconnect and thought between construction manager at risk and contractor. There is a big difference.
General contractor.
General contractor. So there is a big difference, but we've already asked for bids, we've accepted those, we've developed a relationship with this company. We don't like the results that we have in front of us right now. We don't like the cost of it. There are some things that we don't like that might have happened along the way. But financially and for the construction of the project, I don't think it's wise to change horses at this time in the process. If we need a few weeks to answer some questions, that is fine, but we're asking them to do some work now and to come back to us in two weeks. If we say no tonight, will we get that work? Probably not. Will the price go up or will the price go down? We don't know. Some people say prices are going down in the construction industry. In twenty-eight years on council and public employment, I've never seen prices go down enough to make a big difference. When people have a chance to make more money, they do it.
Well, it's the cost of materials that are significantly going down.
But I think answering the questions is reasonable and prudent, but I, I don't think jettison, jettison K is a good idea. I don't think it's wise, and I think that maybe a couple of weeks to investigate and to find out why or what are the possible results of our actions is a good idea, because my gut tells me that it's a bad move to get rid of K right now. But let's ask those hard questions. Let's put that into question and answer and find out what are the unintended results of our decision if we decide that way. I think we can make a decision based on as many facts as we can.
But to your point, we can't say no and then ask them to do two more weeks' worth of work. I wouldn't do it.
So it's, right now, it would be up to the two people that made and seconded the motion if they wish to change it to a motion to table, or we can just go forward with the motion that's on the table.
I'd feel more comfortable approving it at the December fourth meeting.
Let's, let's go with the, the person that originally made the motion.
I do not want it, I do not support tabling it.
Then they're stuck. We, we have to vote on it, yes or no?
Because tabling, it's not going to do any good.
No, because they're still not going to do any work on it. And these two, I, I, why wouldn't? I would wait until approved.
And I mean, the, the, the cost is the, the, the percentage of fee has already been worked out and agreed upon. Again, everything's bid out. It's an open and transparent process. They built other arenas, went through the process. Again, I agree with Mister Stofy disappointed in the fact that the gentleman that was going to help with the referendum left, but that's over the, water over the dam.
Well, a little bit to that point, though, too, Counselor Geisler is, not only Tony did retire, no doubt, but I think if we went back and looked at the notes, it wasn't like K left us high and dry. Jenna Mead did considerable work both on the education side and on the promotion side, and memory does not fail me in that it passed. So there was some factor in which K was helpful in that, and I would not discount that.
Yep. So again, I don't see a need to table it, and that's why I'm not in favor of changing my motion. That stops a second.
So just, we can, just so we can all be clear on like avenues forward now, so even if we approve it, we are not approving any specific design, any cost, any timeline, nothing associated with this project. Essentially, what we're approving is remaining with K A as a CMAR. We vote no, we are firing K A, and this project is absolutely halted.
Okay, and then we'd write to come back and put a better bid on the table in front of us. We're not firing them, we're just saying we don't like your bid.
I have a question.
Which isn't really a bid, I suppose.
I have a question for Mister Obermeyer. In this contract, we have the right to cancel it at any time, correct?
There's a cost.
We have to pay them for the work that's.
That they've done so far.
Yeah.
I believe there's.
Think so. But I mean, again, I don't foresee that, but I mean, this, there are provisions for if, you know, I think they could leave us too.
That would be a curveball.
That would cost their money.
And that was thirteen.
Two point thirteen, it's on.
Page.
It's page twenty-four of the contract or page one forty-four of our packet. Forty-four, he said, I believe.
Is the one point nine five percent listed in here? Without me scrolling through thirty-four pages?
Probably under compensation somewhere.
Six, six something.
Thirteen point two dash three termination by the owner for convenience. If the owner terminates the contract for convenience in accordance with Article fourteen, then the owner shall pay the construction manager of one point nine five percent of the estimated cost of work not completed as the date of termination.
It's actually where it says what the fee is. Six point one point two, construction manager's fee.
So there is verbiage that also ties this. So that also ties it to the naming rights agreement. I think we all need to read some contracts.
I would imagine it's tied to that if there was a fall through, because the funding would not be there to build the arena. And so clarity, both on our part and K's part on that would be pretty necessary.
Any other questions? Our city engineer might have some input.
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, if it's appropriate, I'd like to just a, a, add some professional experience in, in this arena and specifically with K A. And I, I sit on a not a lot, but I sit on interview committees where we interview construction manager at risk for other projects. And the, the percentage that I've seen is the, the one point nine for five percent is at the low end of anything I've seen. So in my professional opinion, At the low end of anything I've seen. So in my professional opinion. If we were to. Go a different route, we, we would not see a number that's lower than that. That's, that's my opinion and. At N C E, we have successfully worked with K A on multiple projects over the last twenty some years and. I have great faith in their company in order to deliver a quality project to the city of Hermantown and the residents. Um, it's, it's un-unfortunate because the bid prices and stuff, the, the budget and the bids are um. Not in alignment, but that, that is not um. In my opinion, a reflection of okay, that's the, the market thinks outside of their control. And like um Geisler and, and Joe had mentioned, they've, they've done some recent work on. Hockey rings in our community and that's why they were a big part of why they were selected when we did put an R F P out. Um, to select the construction manager at risk. So. That's, that's all I'd like to say, but I think that was important just to.
I have, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead.
I just have another question as far as like procedurally. So yes, these go out to bids. But is there an opportunity to when these bids come out, say if members of the community have developed a relationship with any of the contractors that are going for the bid? To kind of work with them in that front as far as the cost goes.
I think we are obligated to take the lowest responsible bidder.
Oh, right. Okay. Let me give a better example. Or a more specific example. Say someone in the community has a relationship with the window supplier. And they're like, hey, we'll give as part of the project, we'll give a twenty five percent markdown, whatever it is. Like there's still some work. That can be done on the backend as far as the, like again, K is not building the building, right? That's correct. Am I understanding that properly? So there's still opportunity to work with the contractors that are actually building. To go to say Johnson Wilson wins the pavement bid. Okay, well, can you cut cost X Y Z to help the project? Not in a sense of us completely stalling. This project or going down a path that could not be financially beneficial. Because again, like this is a world that you operate in. And you operate in and it's not as easy as a different contractor being able to walk in here and say, I'll do it for twenty percent less. Like the way that the bureaucracy works, it, it's not, doesn't work like that. We're not building a single family home. Where we can just call in Joe Schmo.
But the competitive bid process is gonna give us the best price. If a contract, it would be to their benefit to say. Here's my best price. And oh, by the way, I'll give you twenty five thousand dollars because then it's a tax write off to them. There, there's no benefit for them to lessen their price. They're gonna, they're gonna give you the price that's competitive amongst the market. And it just depends, again, it depends how busy the contractors are, uh, who are gonna be looking at it.
So there's still avenues on the building aspect to save money. In that front, whether it's through relationships, donations, concessions, whatever it may be. That is completely separate from the K A portion. Okay, I just wanna be clear.
And the council holds those, or the city holds those contracts. We are gonna be approving multiple contracts. To manage.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Counselor Jones, if I, if I could maybe help clarify this. So. Once we, assuming the project, the, we approve it to go to design development and then ultimately construction documents. A set of plans will be prepared and. K A will prepare a set of, of bid scopes. So there'll be bid scopes for each trade. And then they will solicit bids, multiple bids for each trade, similar to what Paul did. On the, the estimate. For the site work. He went out to six different contractors and he got bids for site work. What's that? Yep, these are publicly bid. So they're taking. The low bid from all the different vendors that are bidding a specific work scope. And then also, it's my understanding because of this is um. The sales tax, we have a, we'll have a um. Project labor agreement.
Yeah.
So my point was just to be clear, there's still opportunity to leverage these relationships in the construction community to benefit the project. By engaging and locking in with K A is not going to change that.
No.
Correct.
But again, if we think we know a contractor that. That wants to donate or give money, we, I think we need a direction to ha ha on the committee.
Well, right, that's what I, but that's what I'm saying. If like. If the basis of bringing these concerns and asking to table, it is, hey, we've spoken with members in this, in this world and this community that say they can do it for X Y Z. Well, also K is not physically building anything. Those contractors can come in and bid and provide benefit and cost savings on that front. That's my point. It's like we're not tied and locked in. There's still avenues. Possible to leverage those relationships. Are you still set on that table?
No, I, I don't wanna change my uh motion.
Are we done with discussion?
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. I'll have to find the agenda here online.
We're towards the bottom of the alphabet, if you're wondering.
No, I uh was on a different page here. Next, we have a resolution, two thousand twenty three dash one seven seven. Resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus property. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Wicklund, can you describe this?
Uh, yeah, uh, Paul uh Sensed and the Public Works team are taking a plow. Uh, truck that is no longer needed because of new purchase and moving it out of the fleet and into auction. This is the plow and the plow truck.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
That gets sold, that gets sold, right? At auction?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we using a, a vendor for that or?
Yeah, same auction house that I think we traditionally use.
Government auction state or something.
We don't administer the auction.
No.
No, that's.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty three dash one seven seven? Any public input on the resolution disposing of city property? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash one seven eight. Resolution approving change order number one for road improvement district number four fifty one to bite. The amount of thirty nine thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars and twenty five cents. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Jelly. I bet we have a second by Counselor Jones.
Second.
And uh, Mr. Ball, would you?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Th- this is change order number one for the Oakerson Road um. Reconstruction and Senator Sewer Project. There's five different pieces to this change order, one being is we had to. Put a, a new gate, a longer gate that we wanted to access the, the pond um. Additional topsoil. So we had some extra grading that we need to do behind the curb and gutter. That the, the onsite material wasn't suitable, so we directed them bring in some topsoil. Item three is a coarse filter aggregate. We um, we had a wet and unstable trench, so we. Had them excavate and bring in some granular rock for um bedding and backfilling that trench. And then there was um, item four in here is there was some extra pipe related to the um. Lift station that we had to remove. And the last item is the, there, once there was a manhole that. Uh, in the field was different than what the record drawing showed, so we had to do some modifications to that manhole. In total, that was thirty nine thousand eight hundred thirty nine dollars and twenty five cents.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty three dash one seven eight? Do we have any public input on resolution approving change order number one for road improvement district number four fifty one? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty three dash one seven nine. Resolution approving pay request number four for sewer district, sewer improvement district. Number four fifty one to bite in the amount of three hundred twenty five thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and eighty one cents. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Ball.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is pay estimate number four associated with the sewer improvement district four fifty one. And uh, the bulk of this uh, testament includes the batuminous paving, the concrete curb gutter and sidewalk. And some restoration.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Just I have one quick comment that I drove down the road and I think it's great. Um, I was a little surprised at how big the, the T is and, you know. With access to the pond, but looked great. Um, and I, I was concerned at first about how close the curbs and sidewalk would be to the. Neighboring buildings and they are, they're closer than the setback, but it didn't seem uncomfortable to me, so.
So Counselor Geisler, the, the turnaround to the pond. Is the minimum requirement based on the fire access code and our standards that we have in place.
Heck, it'd be a nice parking spot for.
So Paul's able to.
I just remember, we've got other hammerheads, but I don't remember it being that big, but it, it's nice. It's very nice.
Can park during the winter.
Between two and ten.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty three dash one seven nine? Any public input on the resolution approving pay request number four for sewer improvement district number four fifty one? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty three dash one eighty. Resolution adopting assessment role for delinquent utility charges for twenty twenty three. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. This is assessment role for delinquent utilities. It'll be put on next year's property taxes. For the affected uh, landowners and all of these relate to stormwater utility.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, they're all stormwater uh, uh, pieces as we made the changes to the. Uh, staff's ability to negotiate and work longer and closer with uh, water and sewer delinquencies. The stormwater ones are a little more straightforward. It's folks who are not paying, so.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty three dash one eighty? Any public input on a resolution adopting the assessment role for delinquent utility charges for twenty twenty three? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Uh, next, we are, have a motion to close the meeting of the Hermantown City Council. Pursuant to Minnesota statute section thirteen D point zero five subdivision three B to consider an offer or counter offer. For the sale of real property for economic development. And upon that discussion ending, we will reopen the meeting and address resolution two thousand twenty three dash one eighty one. Do we have a motion for, to move to a closed session?
So move.
Motion by Counselor Jelly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anyone that's here is uh.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, do we need another roll? We have a motion. Second by Counselor LeBlanc. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I gotta find the agenda again.
It was one eighty one, I think.
I got it.
That's gotta be a record for resolutions.
Resolution two thousand twenty three dash one eighty one, resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk. To execute and deliver a commercial purchase agreement with BMAX Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Jones. We don't need any explanation.
Nope, just a, a land purchase.
Purchasing property for trail easement uh, near the Morris Thomas Road.
Yep.
And uh, do we have any questions from council?
Nope.
Are we online?
We are online, but we don't have anybody online.
Do we have any public input? Do you have any public input? Any public input? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jones.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, motion to recess. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, second by Counselor Geisler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign.